Go forward with Howard Terminal, they're gonna
Hi, Linda Adam, and I am a longshore African American woman down in the
Oh, hey Ray, uh
And I am just appalled that we even got to this point. I don't know if
See, there's a difference between the A's and Raiders, right? Right now is, if from my perspective, you tell me if I'm wrong, I see the A's and Cavill actually negotiating.
And it's talking about
I agree with that.
Yeah, there's a
I can provide this number.
They don't go to the Capitol too low.
That's not negotiating.
They're talking about supplemental jobs.
I can't remember the last time the Raiders ever offered an actual turn
And figure employees
The city of Oakland two disagreeing.
Uh, um
I don't
Type in that they
Remember one?
To not use it as a supplemental job. That is my issue. This is going to affect my job.
Uh, yeah. See, Gallo, Fife, uh Uh, so Gallo was no, who was the abstention?
Uh, Carol Fife was the abstention.
So did this go through?
Yeah, uh huh, yeah. Hey, everybody, I, the me, the meeting, I turned off the public comment, by the way. Uh, I turned that off, yeah. Yeah, public comments is off.
So, I, like, like, like I said, um, the, the A's and the Raiders are just two unique different beasts, right? I don't ever remember the A's, or excuse me, I don't ever remember the Raiders saying, hey, this is our proposal. This is what we want at this cost, and then the city of Oakland said, I don't really agree with that. I don't think so. We're off by a hundred million dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, Zenny, but at least with the A's and the city of Oakland, they actually have a specific figure where they disagree on. Like, you can bring up that number and say the figure is X, right?
Mm-hmm.
But with the, with the, with the Raiders, we never got that, and how, how insulting and disrespectful is it? Not just to season ticket holders like myself and many of, many other season ticket holders that are on there, but to East Oakland. East Oakland and taxpayers that have doled out hundreds of millions of dollars over the last twenty years to accommodate the Raiders, but yet, the city of Oakland has never received to date any formal offer with a specific number for us to discuss and debate.
Right.
The A's are, and at the end of the day, the A's, let's say, the A's in the city of Oakland, God forbid, and I hope it doesn't come to this. Let's just say at the end of the day, the A's and the city of Oakland don't agree on a specific number. The A's can say, look, we're here looking out for taxpayers, and the A's can say, we're looking out for our business, that's how business happens. It sucks, I hope that doesn't hap- I really hope, I hope that doesn't happen, that, that's life. But what the Raiders did, that's insulting, that's egregious, and I would, I, I mean, you have to almost beg the question. If there isn't any laws against what the Raiders did, there absolutely should be some form of state or federal law that mandates if cities are gonna be put in a posi- in a position financially, that private corporations have to be in a binding agreement of some sort, because what the Raiders did was horse crap.
Hey, uh, what do you think about, oh, by the way, some of you, I think Ray too, I think you said that you heard my mic was on.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, I was having an argument with a council member, I can't say who, because I was explaining that this whole process is bass ackward. And what I mean by that, let me be very clear in my meaning. They don't understand that when you do a project like this, you get your tax increment financing monies out of the way. You say, this is how much money is available. And I have a spreadsheet that goes all the way back to two thousand seventeen, actually two thousand fifteen, but I modified it for Dave uh, for a conversation we had April fourth, the two thousand seventeen, four o'clock in the afternoon, because he didn't understand about the history of the project. He swore that public money couldn't be available, and I said, no, that's not true. Uh, there's something called SB six twenty-eight Beal, uh, that really is the father, if you will, of the whole, uh, enhanced infrastructure development craze, if you wanna call it that, uh, that California has gotten on over late. And, um, well, at least for this project. Anyway, uh, well, I was trying to explain it, but I said, look, what's the total assessed value? What's assessed value you're gonna start with? And then, at the end of the day, how much total tax increment revenue are you talking about? Like, my calculation, four percent rate of growth assessed value, annual forty-five years, two, if you start with a two billion dollar base your assessed value, with the ballpark and some additional development, it gets to one point six billion. Uh, and that's not using a taxing agency money upfront, that's another more detailed story. There was, we were looking at two point six billion. My point is, we, we have a revenue envelope from which to, you know, have conversation, right? But, did you hear anything like that today?
I didn't hear anything like that, and, you know, so, uh, cause, cause you were kind of referencing, tou- correct me if I'm wrong, this has something to do with like a Tiff district, right?
It is, yeah.
And though the reason why I'm familiar with that, it's because it's something that Floyd Kepphart had brought up, just in theory, so I'm, I'm familiar with that theory, right? So I get what you're saying. But, I want to come out from an overhead view to where, like, what you're saying is, it's, it's in the weeds and it's, and it's specifics, right?
Well, and actually, I said, I asked, Floyd Kepphart might have, has to have that idea, but the first tax increment financing age that I did was in nineteen eighty-seven, so
Right.
Yeah, I created him, and I've done thousands of calculations.
No, but, but I'm just saying, that's the reason why I'm familiar with it, because
Oh, that's it.
It was explained to me at one point, so, okay, when you, when I hear that term, it's like, oh, I've, I've heard that before.
Yeah, I get you, I get you, yeah.
Right.
He brain, he brain here.
Yeah, but, so what I'm saying, though, i- it goes back like this. I live here in Sacramento, right? I work at the state capitol.
Mm, yeah.
Okay, back in twenty fourteen, when they, when the Kings were at Arco Arena in Natomas, in North Sacramento, they had an opportunity to either move to Anaheim, and then I think it was Seattle, or go downtown. And, one of the votes was Councilwoman Angelique Ashby, who represents Natomas. And she was faced with, do I keep the Kings in my district to keep jobs here and keep money in my district? Or do I vote to allow the terms, to go forward to allow the Kings to go downtown, and at that time, it was a very ambitious plan. They had to do a public-private financing, they had to do infrastructure and parking. Angelique Ashby, in the end, said, this is bigger than my district, this is for my city, and because of her vote, the Kings were able to go to di- to downtown where we're at right now, okay? As of four months ago, where the Kings Arena used to be, in Angelique Ashby's district, they are now building a multi-billion dollar medical hub where they're gonna train doctors and nurses, where six-figure salary jobs will now be coming to the Natomas area that wouldn't have been coming to Sacramento had they kept the Kings there at that major property. And so because of Angelique Ashby, she openly said, it's my district, I get it, I'd love to have them here, but there's bigger things that we can do if we take on this ambitious project and move the Kings to Sacramento. And, for some reason, the Oakland politicians, some of them, they just, they can't get out of their own way, and they don't see the bigger picture. I'm not one to speak in, you know, um, in word salads or in very vague words, but you get what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's like, baseball doesn't belong, just like, just exactly the reason why the Giants have no reason, had no reason to build at Candlestick Park. There's no reason for that. The A's are no different, and I know Gallo, no, C- Councilman Gallo was saying, we're not competing with the desert. You're right, you're not competing with the desert. I mean, you may be competing because they're trying to steal our team, but you are competing with the other team in the Bay Area that has a picturesque majestic view that fans and non-Giants fans like going there. You need to give other people in your region to wanna say, do we wanna go to the A's game today? Or do we wanna go to the Giants game? Do I wanna go to East Oakland today? Or do I wanna go to, 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 uh, to eighteen, or Oracle Park? It's, it's a no-brainer. Why would you wanna go to East Oakland, even though it's a brand-new stadium, when you still have a brand-new state-of-the-art ballpark in San Francisco? You can't compete with that at, at the Coliseum site.
No, you can't, no. But now, see, my bo- my problem with the Coliseum site is sea level rise. I would have been for the Coliseum site had I not been hit with a deluge of reports last year about that in, at that time, nineteen years, we're gonna have seventy-two inches of water, uh, at the Coliseum site. And we have, not only that, that comes from a number of reputable sources, and then Zach Wasserman, who's over at BCDC and, uh, is an attorney with Walter Rose, and I've known for a long time, was talking about how, there's no plan, and he was talking about this, uh, on a local network, he said that, well, we're just gonna have to get to it, because no one seems to wanna deal with it. And I'm saying, this is another proof of the fact that nobody wants to deal with it, you wanna I pitched it to one, I was trying to go to one council member about it, and I said, look, this is the problem, and so let me just build, you know, a, a platform, right? They could also let that platform go across this four and a half, but that's a bigger problem, right? Even if you build a platform for the Coliseum, okay, guess what? It doesn't handle the problem for I eight eighty, and there's a, there was actually one idea of undergrounding I eight eighty, and it doesn't ha- handle the problem for the Oakland Airport. The whole, if you look at the map for the projected sea level rise for the Bay Area, do you know which area has the biggest blue? It's our area, it's East Oakland, including people that live down there in low-income housing. So, you have all these politicians that say, oh, I'm really concerned about East Oakland. If you're concerned about East Oakland, fix the sea level rise problem. Establish a, or a tax increment financing district like the one that I was responsible for coming up with the data for in the A's, and lift a two billion dollar bond issue, so we can fix that problem and get the area ripe for future development. Right now, it's not, and, you know
So, real, real quick, th- th- there's a comment that said that if a ballpark was built in Las Vegas, it would be built sooner and quicker. So, okay, let, let me say a couple of things to that. Just because you can do something quick doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. Are you also gonna fleece more of your taxpayers to build something publicly funded while your education system ranks dead last in the nation? You know, also too, are you gonna also raise more taxes because you're gonna need a roof to build over your ballpark, because it's hot as hell, you're in a desert? So, or, or, would you like to stay in a market that you're already established in, in the Bay Area, and build at Howard Terminal where you have the fourth richest owners in the league that
Ray? Blue, Ray? Blue, Ray? Ray? I think we lost Ray for a second, we'll be
Yeah, what about there, can you see me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, it's, it's like this, if they were given an option, you can go build a brand-new state-of-the-art stadium in the middle of Fresno, are you gonna do it?
Well, I, I hear, he was, but my, my point is that, and, and I, I'm honest, I told Dave, I said, look, uh, if I were you, I'd go to Vegas. The reason why I said that is that I, as I was talking to the council member, I said, look, you guys are doing this whole bass ackward. And this is no joke. The way they're handling this is unlike anything I've ever seen in my thirty-three-year history of the city of Oakland redevelopment. Uh, you don't do redevelopment, and you know what this is born of? It's born of of the mob mentality, mob wants control, the mob wants to do social media to exact its opinion and all that stuff, and these politicians are listening to it. And on top of that, Ray, we have a strong mayor from a government, we don't have a council manager from a government. I, I'm guessing that in Sacramento, you have council manager?
We have coun- yeah, because I think there's, there's, we actually just voted on that, and it, and it, and it was shot down. There's only a few cities, uh, in San Francisco and San Diego, I think, are strong mayor.
Yeah, Strong Mayor has not served us. All of our losses of sports teams have occurred under Strong Mayor. And it's because you have politicians that wanna be stars, you have a city staff that, and this is more important, our institutional memory is shot because people that normally would stick around for a while, who have jobs, who remember how we used to do things, they're gone. And the average time that a chief administrative officer stays in Oakland is roughly about three years, it goes at one point, two point one one. Point that I'm making is if the top person's gonna leave in three years, what's gonna happen to the bottom people? They're gonna be leaving too. And that's, that's something that we've had as a problem, uh, since two thousand, uh, two, when Robert, Jerry fired Robert Bob over the whole well, baseball stadium, and what I didn't like about what Noah was saying, Mobio, is Noah conveniently forgot that the reason why Howard Terminal was down on list, you remember this, hey, guess what was number one? The downtown stadium, remember that? Okay, but I remember, I remember the day, you, I'm the guy who brought Forest City to Oakland, so
Oh, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one day, the first, weren't they the first of three developers?
Right, and then Jerry stole it from me, and then Greg Vilcon said, we're gonna move housing. I said, are you kidding me?
It was Forest City Colony Capital.
That was nineteen ninety-eight. Yeah.
Right, Forest City Colony Capital and then, uh, uh, Ronnie Lott's group, right?
Right, exactly, yep, yeah, absolutely.
You know, hey, 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 Zenny, real quick, because I totally don't mean to cut this short, because I have to go back to work, uh, a couple of things real quick for you, because I wanna get some Yeah. I don't, I don't, I'm not an expert, or I don't know as much as like I did when I was with the, you know, doing the whole Raider saga. Couple of things, okay? First one, answer them when I'm done asking the question, okay? First one, what year do you think ESPN will do a thirty-for-thirty relocation saga for Oakland? And are we gonna be in it? Okay, the second one, here's my second question, is what's next? Do we go now to the county and are they gonna vote, and are we gonna be all nervous when they go to the vote? What, can you tell us what's next? Before I, before I get going?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, uh, looking backward, the county vote is the next vote, I believe that happens, uh, in August or September, the county vote is the next vote. Um, and then, in terms of your ESPN thirty-for-thirty, I think, you know, Chris DeBenedetti, remember him, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Chris actually came to my place in two thousand seven and filmed me for what was gonna be a kind of a thirty-for-thirty regarding Oakland and sports, and he never never used it, so you should ask Chris about that, and I, and ask Chris, where's that, uh, video you made of Zenny talking about this in two thousand seven, and how come you buried it? Ask him, okay? And, uh, because he wants to pretend like I'm a journalist and all this, and I have no involvement, and you and I both know he's been heavily involved in this stuff. And it's just so disingenuous, okay? So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, to answer your question regarding ESPN, I expect to see something like that either next year or the year before. Um, I, in terms of answering your question regarding Las Vegas, the reason why I said that is, again, the city needs a cleansing of how it does things, it's too mob-oriented. We have no professionals involved that have any real stake in this. Molly Mayburn, I don't know Molly, I have nothing against her at all. She's the project manager, but you know when she was hired, two thousand nineteen, okay? So we can't say she's been working on it a long time, she just got hired. And, um, it, it's ridiculous, and what I was saying to, in the argument that you heard in the background, I was explaining that, you can get, the, 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 the council member, I will not name, was saying that, uh, hold on a second, uh, I'm on live, can I call you back? Hello? Okay. All right, I, I'll call you back, let's see. All right, anyway, uh, the whole point is that, uh, what I was ma- the point I was making to the council member is, look, the council member was saying that what does our tax increment financing have to do with the A's? Why do they need to know? Why does the public need to know? Oh, I think A's, I think he left, okay, uh, unless he comes back. Anyway, uh, um, the point that I was trying to make to the council member is that everyone needs to know, and this is what I'm talking about, folks, let me, uh, here's Ray. Oh, Ray, there you go, yeah, okay.
Sorry about that, go ahead, finish up here, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, but I was saying to the council member real quick was that, uh, everybody needs to know what the total tax increment is, and not only that, you're doing the tax increment for the A's, okay? That sets up the climate for a private placement. Why is a private placement, uh, a private activity bond so important? Because a private activity bond allows the city to float the bond, but you know who pays for it if the bond defaults? The A's. That's why.
That's how it's set up here in Sacramento with the parking, because here, before, but before the Kings, so the reason why it works here specifically with the Kings, if you ever visited Sacramento pre-two thousand fifteen, if you ever came downtown Sacramento, you see all these parking garages. So each parking garage, if I last checked, there's about seven hundred spaces. And usually here in Sacramento, each spa- each parking garage uses daily about two hundred. So you have about five hundred spaces that go unused every day, lost their revenue. So what they said is, is if we rent those parking garages out to the Kings and fill it up, because there's games and there's, you know, things that are going on, that'll help build the arena. And whatever money, if there's ever a loss, like, let's say they expect seven hundred people to show up, but for some reason in a year, they average three hundred, the Kings are responsible for that, right? That's their backup. Now, let's relate this to Las Vegas. Let's just say, I'm just gonna use a figure here, let's say every year, a million people come to Las Vegas every year. And with the new tax, taxes for the hotel, they expect five million people to come, okay? But what if in Las Vegas, for some reason, for a few years, only two million people come? You're a loss of that. Who picks that tab? Not the Raiders?
Nope, no, not, not at all, but I'm saying that, you know, look, it's easier to do something in Las Vegas than here, because for one thing, they don't have the same structure of government we do, A, B, a lot of what they do is governed by the state. Um, and C, to be honest with you, from an emotional standpoint, they really wanna get something done. And the people expect them, and that's the other thing, Ray, the people expect the government to do something. Uh, and it's not, and, and they're actually changing to a point where they're gonna have a lot of the same social services we have in California, mainly because a lot of us are moving there, right? But, um, but my point is, I'm not concerned about Las Vegas, uh, per se. I'm concerned about Oakland and how we've lost our ability. Yeah, I kept saying this before, I said, look, we're the Raiders state, I said, we have to have, we have the will initiative to complete big projects. The question I have for you is, how do you see Oakland five years from now or ten years from now? Are we gonna be truly like this outside city that talked about what it has, or are we gonna have all the tunes, or what do you think?
Can I be very blunt with you, and it's gonna be very controversial?
Please.
Oakland is too liberal progressive for its own good.
Okay.
They are so worried about, or this is just an example, this is outside of sports, they're so worried about plastic straws when they got needles on the floor. They're so worried about, you know, housing, when you have all this red tape preventing houses being built. When you have, look, let me put it to you this way, okay, I work at the state capitol, I, I write, I help write legislative bills, right? There's only been one ruling class.
You know, you know Betty Galvin.
Yeah. So, there's only been one ruling political class and one ideology for the last eighty-plus years in Oakland. Something has to change and people need to be, um, kept honest. I'll give you an example, you know who's being kind of kept honest right now as a whole state? The city of Texas. Texas has always been red, they have been, but there's some blue going over there.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of okay, in a sense, because Republicans there, and I'm one, they're being kept honest. That's just, you know what I mean, they're, they're not going so far right, they're being kept honest. And I'm not saying that Oakland needs Republicans, I'm saying that Oakland needs more moderates, more classical liberals, that are a little bit more fiscally conservative. So I'll ask you this before I gotta get going, how many council members are business owners on city council?
That's what I'm getting, that's not, that's none, and that's why we have the problem. I think the other problem is that we don't have a real qualified professional class that's, that understands how to do these things, and we're trying to keep the council happy uh, than anything else. We didn't have that before, and the mayor. It, we, we're so politically top-heavy that it's really wrecked our ability to have the will and the initiative to complete big projects. We don't have a large convention center, Ray.
No.
We, you don't have a large-scale event center, and you know what? Everyone's yelling, yelling about baseball, but no one has realized, hey, look, you can have all kinds of events at that baseball ballpark, not just baseball.
That's exactly right.
Hundreds of events, and the city staff, because they don't know, didn't make this point, and Dave could have helped them with it. Because, you know, but look, this is his first rodeo in terms of big, big project, let's be honest, all right, nothing against Dave, but it's true. So, you got the blind, I've said it before, and I don't mean to insult anybody, but it's true, got the blind leading the blind, all right? And what, this is what we're getting, and then you have the public screaming because they don't understand, yeah, people who never read legislation on this project.
And, and you, you, you know what's another point, Zenny, is before, I can't believe Larry Reed's daughters on city council, but
Oh, she's my heart, man, I like, I like Triva, she's gonna, we, we have to, man, we have to help her out, man.
I don't know, you know what?
She'd love you, wait, she'd love you.
You know what, it, it's not, it's not personal to her, it has nothing to do with her, but it has to do with Larry. Larry was this guy, if you looked on his page, I don't know if it's on there anymore, he was the heart of Oakland, this Oakland and East Oakland that. I, I don't respect that, because in Oakland, there's, there's over twenty-four liquor stores within like a five-mile radius and one grocery store. There are piles of illegal dumping that have just been there. You don't tell me you're for the people when your district has a food desert and you've been there for twenty-five years. Businesses don't wanna be there because they're afraid to invest. Businesses aren't gonna come and bring their tax revenue so it can go to your, to your streets, to your schools, to better your quality of life. There's no social gatherings in East Oakland, people fear for themselves. There's no law enforcement, when there's no law enforcement anywhere, that's where tribalism comes. People say, I'm just gonna guard my street, because
But you know, in defense of Larry, though, I have to say, because Larry, Larry's the guy that actually got me the job with Elihu Harris, but, uh, uh, it, but Larry, I think, really got frustrated, and I remember a guy that works for me who's laying my mouth on a drop, said something to me now twelve years ago, he goes, Zenny, Oakland is ungovernable. And I think what happened, Ray, I think they just checked out, okay, I really do.
And, I mean, am I wrong about Larry, those points that I brought up?
I think to a degree, yeah, because I know Larry's tried, uh, and, you know, Larry might have his issue with me, but I always loved Larry as a person. And, you know, uh, that's just the way it is, and, uh, uh, I think, and he's always been nice to my parents, you know?
This, this isn't personal, right, because like when, it's talk, we're talking about just results, what you see in the city, it could be, it could be Joe Schmo or Maria Bob or whatever, right?
Right, right.
Individual that's elected there to represent that city, his city
But Larry, before Larry, while says, it's on the video, Larry says, ask your god sister. Okay? All right, okay, hey, you know?
Hey, 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 real quick, because, because I do have to get going back, uh, for my lunch break. So, there's public comment right now, there's no point for me calling in because the vote's already passed, I'm assuming?
Yeah, the vote's is, the vote's done, you, you saw it, right?
Yeah, 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 I just, I just wanna double-check, because Boss told me to call in, um, and then the next vote, did you have a date for the county?
Uh, I'll get one for you, I'll broadcast it.
Okay, and then let's say after that vote, what happens after that vote?
Well, what we're looking at is December, I believe it's December sixth, uh, at least at this point, date for the vote on the real document that matters, which is called the Due Diligence in Development Agreement, DDA, okay? Uh, and, uh, the, the DDA is, uh, due, I'm writing this down, due due diligence, uh, and I misspelled diligence, development agreement, but in the interest of time, I'm not gonna go back and correct it, but I wanted to pop up here, uh, yeah, that's it, the due diligence. Again, folks, I misspelled diligence, so forgive me, due diligence and development agreement, that's the document that really matters, because when you get a vote on that, then everybody is bound, okay?
Yeah.
City is bound, the A's are bound, uh, the county is bound.
Something that the Raiders never have, ever.
The Raiders, the Raiders sat back like this, and it was completely different, like, I, I read a old two thousand fifteen, uh, livestream video from when I was at the NFL owners meeting, Eric Grubman uttered that famous word that you and I hate so much, viable. Remember that?
Oh, hey, hey, you know what, I'm gonna, I
Dude, dude, Ray, Ray, how many times did he hit us over the head with it? It was like, okay, okay.
I know, I know. I have to, hey, real quick, because I'm walking, walking back into work right now.
Uh huh.
Hey, you know what, you know what I was so happy about when I tweeted out yesterday? I tweeted Mark Fadane, good riddance, you coward, I'm glad you're gone.
Oh, man, I, I, I can't say anything bad about Mark, I just can't.
You know what, he has to be, did you know that, you know, when the Raiders got approved in Arizona for the vote? I crossed him in the hallway, and I'm, I literally almost spit in his face, then I said, I said, nah, you know what, I'm, I'm not gonna get arrested. So I said, I said, you're a coward, and then I, and then I went up the elevator.
Oh, no, I didn't, I, I never have, and I never will do that, um
Yeah, I didn't, because you know what, I just didn't want my, my name to be everywhere. I almost spit in his face, but I did not.
Well, let me put it this way, Zenny's sixty-two media is now a C, a C, Delaware sequel, which I was sixty-three percent. And a large part of the reason I've gotten this far is the NFL, so, you know, what good is it for me?
Yeah.
To build relationships like that, it's not, uh
No, I know, but I'm just saying, me as a fan, when I was a fan, and I was at that meeting with, you know, with the final vote, man, I wanted to choke him so bad, I can't stand him.
I don't, I think Mark, at the end of the day, uh, did what he thought was best for the Raiders, and what he thought, I'm not saying, look, if I were running the Raiders, I would have had you involved, um, as, you know, as the person that marshals us, because you have a deep history as Dr. Death. I felt that was disrespected, um, tremendously. What they should have done was what they did with Godfather Gris, you know, they made Ray, they made Godfather an offer to the Raiders. Uh, he turned him down. Uh, he turned him down, you know, and so I, but, you know, that's, that didn't happen. Uh, I think the sad part about this is a lot of great people have been involved in Oakland. Yourself, Scott McKibben, Andy Borlitch, you know, a lot of these folks don't talk to each other. It's for the smallest reasons, right? Um, but I like Mark, you know, Mark and I, we both, I'll be, oh, here's the thing. I don't, I don't agree with everything he does, but I like him as a person, alright, you can have a friend and not agree with everything that they do. Now, was that hard, like voting in Las Vegas? Of course it was hard. You know, but I made a decision right then and there, I said, you know what? You know who told me this was Elihu Harris when I worked for him, he says, Zenny, take those brains, let me out, he says, take those brains and work on them for yourself, because nobody in Oakland cares. He said, in nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, you know.
That tells you all you need to know about Oakland, okay?
Yeah, you know what, I, I wanna say this though, before I sign off, um, is, you know, Oakland meant a lot to me, it, I think it built me as Doctor Death. There's a lot, you know, I have such an affinity for Oakland and the culture and the people. And everything that embodies Oakland is a lot of, it's, it's my story, right? It's very much my story. Uh, Zenny, you and I, we've had our disagreements, we've had our agreements. We, there's people that we've gotten along with, there's people.
I love you like a brother, brother.
What's that?
I love you like a brother, brother.
Oh, yeah, me too, right, and I mean, but, but that was, but if you look back at that story, it's so nostalgic and, you know, unfortunately, I think there's some people in the chat, maybe they don't, they, they didn't have the ability to experience what we did, cuz maybe they're, they're, they're rooting from us from another city, which is cool, you know? But there are some people who are able to come and step in our Oakland world and see the dynamics and what we were doing, man, it was so fun. Um, you know, I, Oakland, it's like somebody once told me, there's a little bit of Oakland in everybody.
Yeah, there is, no, and this.
And, and look, hey, me as, as a Catholic conservative kid that grew up in the suburbs here in Sacramento, going to Oakland allowed me to become that something different, that, that counterculture. It gave me that, right? And in the meantime, I got to see beautiful people, people that I completely, completely disagreed with, but loved them, it was awesome. Can't speak more highly of it. You know, and so that's why when you invited me on, I go, I'm gonna step back in my shoes and my doctor, my virtual Doctor Death shoes and come back and chat with people and, you know, I miss Oakland. You know, I, it, it built me and I think in the next two to four years, I'll probably be running for public office at some point, you know?
Hey, Ray, I got something for you, check this out. This is new, buddy.
Yeah, man.
This is new, buddy. That's Doctor Death, folks. That's Doctor Death, that's, that's this man right here.
So there was a part that was inaudible in that part.
You brought it.
Hey, there was a part of that that was inaudible because I think people were cheering and I don't think you heard it. And that, it was the Carmen Policy one, I said, you hired Carmen Policy. And then I asked Mark Bedain, Mark Bedain, do you have experience in building stadiums? And the complexities that come with it? If you don't, why are you leading it? And, and the look that he gave me was, like, I've never, I, you know what, what I felt so good? Felt embarrassed. Cuz.
But you know what, though? He, he, he does have that fabulous cap now, even though he, I, and why do you think he really resigned?
You know, I don't know, um, I, it's pure guess. The only thing that I can think of is maybe things aren't going as well as it seems behind the scenes, maybe he's overwhelmed? That, y'all, no, well, I take that back, let me take that back. You know what my initial reaction is? Mark's getting ready to sell and that new person wants their new person in there, and he's gonna sell in two to three years.
Hmm.
That's my, total guess game. But, but going back to that thing, I had so much pleasure calling out Mark Davis at that thing. His, his cheeks turned red and I loved that, cuz I, I think from my vantage point where I was, I can see Mark, cuz he was like to my right. And nobody can see him and we made eye contact and when I was calling him out, he just said, he gave me the look like, man, I didn't come here for this stuff.
No, he doesn't, he doesn't, he's, he's, he is sensitive like that, you know? Uh, but I think that aside, it's, it's.
And thank you for showing that, man, brings back a lot of memories.
Oh, by the way, do you know that we actually did, the Raiders actually did have a plan for stadium for Oakland?
You know what, I saw that, but it's like, I, I've, I've heard and I've seen a rendering, it wasn't like tall, black, something or other, it was like a lark.
There's three of them.
See, I didn't know about the three of them, but the thing is, why not make it public?
Right, but you, you, you know who saw it? Nate Marley saw it, he told me, September of two thousand sixteen, he was at the Raider office, he saw the rendering, I asked him to describe it, he said it was like Seattle's. And then I found it in two thousand eighteen by Nies Architects. He was on Twitter and the dude says, well, that wasn't for the Raiders, it was for the Raiders.
Yeah, see, my, my, see, my thing is this, this is what I don't understand, right? Over the last two years, you saw the, the rooted in Oakland signs, right, by the A's and, and you, you can get off a bart? And it was these picturesque majestic stadium or ballparks, right?
Oh, wait, wait, real quick, hold on a second, hey, folks, the vote happened. The only two no votes were, uh.
Gallo.
No Gallo, Gao, excuse me, and then Cal Fife was the abstention. Everybody else voted for it, so someone wrote, uh, can't wait for the vote tonight, the vote already happened, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, no, but what I'm saying though is like for the last three to four years, the A's have had their rooted in Oakland campaigns, those are their PR campaign, right? Where you get off a bart. And at the very first reaction, it's like, oh, that's cool. Okay, but then after a while, it took about two to three years, about two years, for people to finally say, okay, you're sloganeering and your pictures are cool, when are we gonna start saying things that are tangible, right?
Right.
But if you think about it, those two years bought the A's time to do whatever they needed to do. And the Raiders never did that, because I don't know if they just didn't give a rat's ass. I don't know, because they wanted to stick to, to the strategy of Oakland, you know, how much of that sloganeering do we hear, Oakland's not doing anything, or Oakland chose the A's over the Raiders? The Raiders stuck with that or relied on that and did next to no PR work. Had the Raiders at the very minimum, very minimum, just said, this is, I think what we want our stadium to look like, it would have bought them time. It would have bought them love from people, it would have said, look at the Raiders trying.
Yep.
They're, they're not real, like the A's. Okay.
You know what bothers me about that, what you're talking about too? Is, love him as a person, but Ronnie Locke, I feel like he was a straw person developer. Because no, he, he came in, had no previous experience or developer play, put on, was put out there and then the minute it went south, and I've seen Ronnie at Super Bowl parties, but my point is, we didn't have a developer that we could really rely on to get it done, that it develops stadiums or anything else. And.
Hey, hey, hey.
I love that Ronnie was wrong, but eh.
Hey Zen, hey, I totally don't mean to cut you off, but I gotta, um, hold on.
Oh, go ahead. Uh-oh, I think.
Never mind, I was gonna show you, I have to go back into the Capitol right now, it's where I work. I went from, uh, I guess.
Hey, same, I have a Galvin, no joke, Galvin's one.
I went.
He's one of my great friends.
That's politician death.
So why are you Republican, man? You gotta switch parties.
Nah, man, Catholic conservative, I've always been.